Because we have members this evening, we have to square them in before we can even start the meeting. Okay, so the first thing we're gonna do this evening is square them in, so if you guys could join me?
I want you guys to go.
All right.
Okay, how are you doing? Bye. Oh, that's me. Buddy's there on the spot.
Sure.
Come on up, why don't you sit there, sing your kids come up?
You should be that.
We're here for some purposes of pictures here, we need it.
Raise your right hand, he at me, I solemnly swear.
He solemnly swear.
That I will well and truly demean myself.
And I will well and truly.
As Commissioner of the City of Avondale Estates, Georgia.
City of Avondale Estates.
For the ensuing term. I will faithfully enforce the charter and ordinances of the city.
Charter.
For the best of my ability. Without fear or favor.
Fear or favor.
And in all acts as Commissioner. Act as I believe in the best interest of the city.
I think.
So help me God. Congratulations.
Didn't count. Okay.
He at me, I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will well and truly demean myself.
I will well truly demean myself.
As Commissioner of the City of Avondale Estates, Georgia.
Commissioner of the City of Avondale Estates, Georgia.
For the ensuing term.
For the ensuing term.
That will faithfully enforce the charter and ordinances of the city.
Stars that order the city.
The best of my ability.
Best of my ability.
Without fear or favor.
Without fear or favor.
And all acts as Commissioner.
Commissioner.
Act as I believe in the best interest of the city.
Best of the city.
So help me God. Congratulations.
Oh, sorry.
Okay.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will well and truly demean myself.
That I will well and truly demean myself.
As Mayor of the City of Avondale Estates, Georgia.
As Mayor of the City of Avondale Estates, Georgia.
In ensuing term.
For the ensuing term.
I will faithfully enforce the charter and ordinances of the city.
I will faithfully enforce the charter and ordinances of the city.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Without fear or favor.
Without fear or favor.
And all acts, act, act as Mayor.
And all acts, act as Mayor.
Act as I believe to be in the best interest of the city.
Act as I believe to be in the best interest of the city.
Help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Thank you. Yeah, we need everybody to go and start signing some stuffs. We'll go with. Then we, we need an extra pen.
On the lefty.
Asked wrongly, oh. There we go. You're, you're chest, I'm the H S D test door.
Yes.
Well, sure. Magic pen. Just deep. Chest or I don't know what you're doing. Those two we clear. All right, we're having a voice for everybody.
Thank you all for being here. Hi, this is City of Avondale Estates, Georgia Board of Mayor Commissioners, regular meeting, it's January 10th, 2024, it's now five. Forty? Yep, five forty. Um, I would like to call the meeting to order, we have an agenda before us, do I have a motion to adopt?
So no.
That was Lisa, do I have a second?
Second.
That's Lionel, I'll say aye.
Aye, aye.
All right. All right, first on agenda, we would like to recognize the years of service of Commissioners Brian Fisher and Dean Miriam, and Brian Fisher has been our mayor pro temp, so, but um, I would like to begin, uh, first and foremost, we could not have done it without you. Um, you, DM Brian, um, you know Dee has been attending meetings as long as I have been mayor and, you know, telling us what she thought and usually she has a very informed opinion. And so for, I guess, four years, yes, Dee was at every meeting, uh, she was part of the, uh, still is, I guess, the, uh, Second Century Avondale, which kind of kickstarted a lot of the talk around town about urban design and the need for good urban design and, and, and sort of finishing Mr. Willis's dream, I suppose, but um, Dee has been a great board member, she has always offered a, a very informed opinion, she does her homework, as we like to say. Um, and Dee, I appreciate your service and I'd like to say thank you to the Miriam family, uh, because it's, it's a lot of family, so thank you Dee. Angela, Blythe, Lady Grace, Reece, is Reece here? Okay, but all of you, thank you, uh, it's not easy. And I know you've heard lots of comments and conversations and supported your dad and your husband and, and I appreciate that, so I'd like to thank Fisher family. And, um, so Brian couldn't have done it without you. Um, you know, we, we've done an awful lot in the last eight years. I think that we have truly done things in the best interest of the city. Uh, we did it because down deep in our heart, we believe in this place and we love it and we want it to be a better place for everybody, our kids included, as I frequently say. But Brian, I, I can't say it enough, couldn't have done it without you. Appreciate it and I appreciate you serving as Mayor Pro Tem and covering when I was late or couldn't make it or any of that, so thank you. Lisa?
Yes, I, yeah, I, I couldn't have said a few words before I missed the last meeting, but I, I do want to say a couple of things again, and first, yes, it's, it's been an absolute honor to serve with both Dee and Brian, we've served together a long time, it, it's, you don't know unless you've been here, how, um, the things that you go through as Commissioners together to be on the board, so I know they both care incredibly deeply about our city. I've really appreciated their expertise and they've both contributed a huge amount to the success of the city and to where we are right now. And you know, the Commissioner role, I just want to talk a little bit about this because I think it's really important for the function, healthy functioning of a government. You know, part of our role is to be a decider and to cast an independent vote, right? Everybody sees that all the time, a lesser visible part of being a Commissioner is being part of a team. And we have to work together to set priorities and goals and fund operations, we have to establish long-term community policies, some of which are complex, like zoning. As a team, we have to move all these things forward, even when we don't agree on all the details. Communication's important, listening's important, finding common ground matters, compromising matters. And I just want to say that both Dee and Brian have been great team members. Because they've been good team members, I've trusted and respected both of them and felt trusted and respected in return, even when we've had differences of opinion. And that's really an achievement for all of us, and I, I think, you know, in today's world, it's something to be very proud of, so thank you guys for that. Thank you for your hard work and dedication, it's truly been a privilege, thank you, and thanks to your families.
Commissioner LaRocque? Yeah, um, it's kind of funny not seeing both of you out there. Um, you know, it, it's, it's been, um, you know, a good six years hard work and, yeah, you know, as Commissioner Fortell said, we don't always see eye to eye, but then again, if everybody saw eye to eye, there would be no point of having five of us up here, right? And I think it's important for, uh, you know, just, uh, you know, the new Commissioners who were just sworn in a few minutes ago and, you know, members of the public, uh, to, you know, understand that, uh, you know, we are a deliberative body, uh, we, there are five of us up here, an odd number, um, you know, that's by design and it's, uh, hopefully that we can bring, you know, five people from the community together to make decisions that will affect the, the city, sometimes those decisions are, you know, spectacular, other times those decisions are less than spectacular, but they are decisions and they have to be made. Um, I, you know, I am proud to, uh, be up here with everyone up here. Uh, just because it is, you know, some work that we do, God knows we don't get paid, uh, you know, a, a lot for it. Um, but it is important work that we do on behalf of everybody and I see government, uh, as a service organization, we're here to serve, uh, folks. Uh, and, you know, I, I'll make one commitment to the, to the residences that, um, I'm gonna make an effort to have more face time with, uh, residents, um, I communicate by email a lot, uh, but I want to talk with people face to face, I'll make that effort. Uh, but, you know, this isn't about me, it's really about Dee and Brian and, guys, I really, uh, appreciate the time that I've had to spend with you. Um, it's intelligence, it's our character and it's, you know, just a commitment to improve things in the city and I think, uh, in the time that, that you've spent with us up here, uh, you have achieved those goals and really appreciate it and really appreciate the support of your family, so there's a sacrifice. Uh, it's a familial sacrifice and I'm sure every resident appreciates the effort that you put into it, thank you.
Thank you. To new Commissioners, would like to say something that?
Sure. I, I would, um, the first thing I'd like to thank the citizens of Avondale for trusting me with this role and, uh, and then to Dee and Brian, um, you know, watching you guys from afar for a long time and then recently watching you up close, you really have set an example of what, what, what it means to be a Commissioner and I hope to, uh, to, to fill the chair, you know, similar to the way you guys have, so thank you, um, thank you for that. Um, and, uh, now I just want to thank my family for their support and encouragement and everybody on the BOMC and their encouragement and taking on this role, so. Thank you all.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, just to piggyback on, on what Graham said, just thank you to everyone for, um, trusting us to, to do right by the city, I look forward to the opportunity. Uh, I want to thank all the Commissioners for all their help with, uh, just everything, this is, this has been a lot and, um, it's, but it's been a lot of fun so, so far. Uh, thank you for all your help and I, I look forward to serving the city, thank you to my family. Thank you so much for all you do for me, um, you know, I just want to be very accessible, very available to, to the citizens, um, so anytime you need to get in touch with me, I'd love to get everybody's perspective that I can because that's important, that's, we're, we're serving the, the public and, and, you know, we've been here for, since 2019, I've just seen so much, so much, so many things happen that's been for the better and, and I, I, I feel like the, the Commissioners and the Board and the Mayor and the city, uh, employees themselves are a big part of that and I'm excited to, to keep that going, so thank you, everybody.
Mr. Manager?
Yeah, um, I might get choked up. It, you know, Brian, you're all I know here. Um, and, and, and Dee, um, you know, like, like Jonathan said at the onset, um, was, was here a lot even prior to her serving as a Commissioner and um, it has been an absolute privilege for me, uh, to serve this city with you two. Um, and that's one I don't take lightly, I, I, you know, um, I really appreciated, um, your faith in me, uh, to, to lead the staff and carry out, um, the very, uh, aggressive and progressive agenda, uh, that, uh, we embarked on. Um, and that's an agenda I also believe in, uh, proudly, um, and the two of you are such incredible leaders. Um, and, you know, I, I cherish the relationships I formed with you, um, I cherish the advice given to me. Um, and I, you know, I hope, um, even though you're no longer serving in the capacity as Commissioner, um, that, um, those relationships continue and to let you know that I'm always available to you. Um, to you both, uh, whenever you need me. Um, we also have prepared, uh, some gifts for the two of you, um, so, you know, over the past several years, one of our major projects has been cleaning out, uh, the upstairs storage, the unfinished area. Yeah, yeah, so we're getting you some broken trays. But we did find some prints, uh, that were designed and made in, uh, the early part of, of this century, I think 2002. Uh, we don't know the backstory of these prints, maybe somebody does, Dee might even know, who knows, but anyway, um, if y'all will come up here, I'd love to present them to you.
The foot?
Yeah, for us.
Brian said, you were everybody.
Well, you can, let's all take pictures.
Okay.
Yeah, just make it fun, okay, so. Yeah, I, well, we did hide in front of you guys, uh. Yeah.
We go.
Yeah, they're the same. So, these photos depict the city during its annual Fourth of July parade. Uh, and, uh, the, the photographs have been mounted and framed and signed by your fellow Commissioners, Department Heads and Members of the DDA whom you appointed. Uh, and what we'd like to do, uh, before y'all leave is for y'all to, uh, dissemble with each other inside each other's. So, I, I hope, um, you'll like it and again, I'm, I'm so, so honored to have served it. Y'all want to get pictures?
Sure.
Well, let me just say, it is, Avondale is really a special place, a little did we know when Tom and I moved here in 1980, what a special place it was. I think a lot of how Avondale is designed and operated and infrastructure contributes to that sense of community and special place. And it's really been a privilege to work with a team who shared that understanding and that vision and it's just been fantastic, thank you.
Thank you.
It feels like full circle, uh, to a certain extent, um. You know, when I started and I ran, uh, my kids were the age of the new Commissioners coming in for the most part. Um, and we did it with a dream of the being, of trying to build a place in a downtown that builds off of what Avondale had, but also built on what it could have, and a lot of that was in our central business district in our downtown, and I think it was a lot of it was sitting around, how do we make this a place that our kids want to come back to and raise their families? Um, and it has been a fantastic place to raise families, and as you see people walking down the street, what you notice are, there are tons of families that have chosen Avondale. Um, and I think we, along with the rest of the community, have had some part in people making, um, that stand. And it's because, like Lisa said, it's a team, it's a team, it's a team not just within the Commission, not with just city staff, not within the police and public works and sanitation, everybody. Um, it is a team effort to try to provide a place that people can be proud of, and I couldn't be prouder of my home, I couldn't be prouder of the city, so, thank you, this is amazing.
Yeah.
Um, this is really great, um, so happy, uh, for this and congratulations, guys, you're doing a great thing. So, thank you. You want us to hold us here or?
Okay, let's do your first.
All right, thank you all. This only happens once every four years. Well, actually, it's two years. Okay. Commissioner comment. Okay. All right, item number five, Commissioners comments, we will start with our new Commissioner, Commissioner Rainey.
Uh, I don't have too much, um, the one thing I've, uh, learned that Commissioners make during this time is they point out things that the city's doing great and I wanted to point out two things, um, the holiday decorations around the city this year were just amazing and, uh, I especially like the color on the trees right across the street, uh, I just think the city does a great job on that, so, so thank you for that, I know it brought me a lot of happiness and I hope it did everyone else too, and my second thing is just a compliment to the Public Works Department and the sanitation team, uh, number one for handling all our refuse over the holidays, I know my house had a lot more than normal. Uh, but they, they handled it beautifully and seamlessly and, and then just to congratulate them on a successful completion of leaf season, I think we've made it just about to the end of leaf season and so I know how hard they worked. I see how hard they work when just driving around the neighborhood, so, uh, just wanted to compliment them on that, so, thank you to those guys.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, um, thank you again, everybody. I, um, just to talk a little bit about what Graham said, just the city does do a great job and I think it's reflected mostly in the fact that you can go about your, your daily activities and you, you don't notice really anything because it's done so well. Um, you know, the, the grounds look great, I noticed, um, that they were redoing and repainting the, the downtown, uh, historic buildings, uh, that, I thought that was great, I, that's so, um, so important to the, the identity of the city to kind of keep that and I love how that's there along with all the, the new stuff that's coming in, it's a, it's a really cool thing that we're, you know, pushing forward with a lot of new investment, but also, um, investing in, you know, what Avondale was a hundred years ago, so, um, yeah, I'm looking forward to getting started and, thank you again.
Thank you. Lionel?
Yeah, um, you know, uh, Christmas, uh, or, you know, that holiday season between, uh, uh, Thanksgiving and New Year is like one of, one of my favorite, uh, times of year around Avondale because, uh, you know, there are a lot of, uh, parties, there are things like the, uh, tour of homes, um, the, uh, gosh, I can't even remember the name, the, uh, market at the, uh, community club, uh, the.
Early market.
Thank you, yes, and, uh, people going around singing and, uh, all of this stuff and I, I think, you know, that is, uh, you know, what I, uh, like most about the city is, uh, the people. Uh, so I hope, uh, everyone had a good holiday season and got to see family and do, uh, whatever it is that makes you happy over that season, so, that's it, yeah.
Lisa?
Yeah, so, but, yeah, totally agree on the public works, I, I mean, it's, it's working like clockwork, it's been really great, I, I don't even remember seeing, I think every year it's getting better and better, the just timely pickup and all of that, so kudos to Public Works and to you, Patrick, on that, but what I want to say is, Happy New Year, everybody, hey, it's 2024 and guess what? We have a big year coming up. All this stuff we've been doing all these years, yeah, we got the town green built, this year, fabric commercial development is gonna be built and the 278 project, it's huge for Avondale. Yes, I'm not gonna say it's not gonna be without some pain, but this is a big year, we're gonna see the result of so much of the planning and work that we've been doing and onward to 2024.
Yes, thank you. Uh, you know, I think we've covered everybody, I'd just like to thank all the citizens that decorate their houses, it just makes me very proud. You know, and I know you're all proud of your homes and your decorations, but it's just really cool that visitors can drive through here and see how much everybody's into it and, uh, see, you know, the decorations in the houses and a beautiful downtown, it just makes me proud, but, um, you know, I'm just looking forward, like Lisa said, to seeing fabric get started on that development and, um, that's all I got, but thank you, Mr. Manager?
Yeah, I think 2024 being a big year might be a little, uh, windy today. A, a very active construction zone, um, we, you know, not only 278 in the fabric development, uh, but, um, potential movement on, uh, other development sites within the city, um, I'll be giving a project update during the work session on several stormwater projects that we've got going on and, and, uh, all of that construction will be concurrent, uh, not to mention a couple of county projects, a, a water main and a sewer line that are, are set to move forward as well, um, so, you, you know, we, we look forward to that because it, it's kind of the culmination of all the work that we've been putting into it, um, but, like, like you all said, it's, it's not gonna be without some pain, but we're gonna do our best to try and mitigate, um, you know, any traffic concerns or, um, hazardous concerns that we can, uh, so just know as a community that we are dedicated to that. Um, I don't really have much more because I'm, I'm still chewing on the fact that Nick Saban just announced his retirement. It, it was a strong overwhelming feeling. So, cheers to 2024.
They are my fans. Okay, I'll get up there, I'll, I'll be fine, all right. Uh, I'm gonna say this, we have before, it's the meetings, I mean, the minutes for the October 25th, 2023 regular and work session minutes, do I have a motion to engross? So, uh, so that was Lionel, go have a second. That was Mike, all in favor, say aye, aye, okay. All right, item number seven, uh, Mr. Manager, why don't you cover this one?
Yes, and so, um, we are currently a fully staffed organization. Uh, the latest member to join the staff, uh, is in attendance with his family tonight, uh, Mr. J D Branch. Uh, upon his swearing, and will officially become the next Deputy Police Chief of the City of Avondale Estates. Uh, JD is joined by his wife Kelly, uh, his son Elijah, uh, and daughter Jada. Uh, he, uh, comes to us from Lake City where he has spent the entirety of his law enforcement career, a very decorated career. Um, full of accomplishments and certifications and, um, you know, going above and beyond and, and I would be remiss if I didn't point out, and I, uh, uh, you know, Chief Hess and I have talked about this and, and we feel very similarly that, um, JD gave one of the best interviews that, that we've ever taken part in. Um, it was very thoughtful, his answers were thoughtful, conscientious, composed, uh, and gave us the confidence that we need uh, to bring him into the organization and we think he will be, he will be a wonderful addition. Uh, so I'd like to call up Chief Hess and, and JD right now, so, uh, JD can go from being JD Branch to Deputy Chief JD Branch.
Hi, Jerry Branch.
You solemnly swear that?
Do you solemnly swear that?
I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States of America.
I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States of America.
Constitution of the state of Georgia.
I will support and defend the Constitution of the state of Georgia.
I will support and defend the charter and ordinances of the city of Avondale Estates.
I will support and defend the charter and ordinances of the city of Avondale Estates.
Not the holder of any trust under the government of the United States or any other state.
I am not the holder of any trust under the government of the United States, any other state, or any.
And, and a foreign state, which I am by the laws of the state of Georgia prohibited from holding.
Or any foreign state, which I am by the law of the state of Georgia prohibited from holding.
I'm otherwise qualified to hold the position of deputy chief according to the constitutional laws of the state of Georgia.
I am otherwise qualified to hold the position of deputy chief according to the constitution and laws of the state of Georgia.
Not the holder of any unaccountable public money due to the state or any political subdivision or authority thereof.
I am not the holder of any unaccountable public money due to this state or any political subdivision or authority thereof.
Faithfully follow the orders of the chief of police and to the best of my ability faithfully, justly perform the duties, obligation of a deputy chief in an honorable, benevolent, civil manner during my commission there.
And that I will faithfully follow the orders of the chief of police and to the best of my abilities faithfully and justly perform the duties and obligations of a police officer in an honorable, benevolent, civil manner during my commission there. So.
Awesome. Thank you. Welcome. All right. Okay. All right, and first item of, well, not first item, but item number eight. Uh, we have before us a resolution to approve a Georgia power easement.
Except that we are not. Oh, wait. We kept the item, um, in order to discuss where we're at in the process. We anticipated being able to provide you with an easement document tonight based on our previous conversation. It's just not quite ready. And with Stephen's legal advice, we don't want to bring forward a resolution for an easement until you have the easement document. Uh, so, uh, that being said, uh, I'm going to, uh, turn the, the podium or the, the floor to Shannon and let her explain to you, um, the easement situation as it currently stands.
Uh, we are going to be, um, there's, there's existing vote out there now. They're going to pull on at the sidewalk with the service queue. Um, they would administer the service yet. Looks like we're going to be able to move those over. It was another poll and, um, we don't. So, so, uh, we won't have any new, but we'll have a replacement poll, but no new. We'll lose one old. So, um, there'll be some charge for the, the skip relocation, but it looks like it's going within the budget. You guys outlined last time she would not give me a number because she said I would hold her too. And, um, she just, then we met. So I expect to get both of those by the next time as well as the easement documentation. So, um, I think we landed in a good place.
Remind me, how much did we offer us? Okay, just.
Direction.
No, that I just wanted to make sure. All right. Okay, so there's no motion, no vote.
Correct.
Squash that. Okay. Anything, Adam? Any questions, comments up here?
Thanks, Rob.
Yes, thank you. Um, well, since there's no vote, no public comment, but if there's nothing up here, I will open it up to public comment. Anything you'd like us to say? Congratulations might be good. No.
Hey, Josh Norris, Fortuna Extra Load. Uh, just want to say thank you to Brian and Dee. Greatly appreciate all the work that you all have done. Um, the other I wanted, uh, let y'all know is that there's a bill pending in the House, uh, House Bill 200. Um, it would, uh, essentially bring ranked choice voting to municipalities in the state. Essentially the idea is bring ranked choice to smaller governmental entities. Let's see how that works. Potentially thinking about doing that for the state of Georgia. I'd ask that y'all consider at some point doing a resolution in support of this. A lot of other, uh, communities have, city of Atlanta, Cat County, um, Jones Creek, among others. And so, uh, I actually work with an organization called Better Balla Georgia. If you ever want a presentation on ranked choice voting, I'd do that as well. So, thank you.
One question. So the, it would, so the state of Georgia would be giving each city the choice?
The choice.
To do ranked?
Ranked choice voting in their local election.
If you want to or not?
If you want or not.
Okay.
Yep.
So it's not like a mandatory statewide requirement? No, it can't. Okay. I, I don't know. I'm just asking.
Okay, it's just to give the cities and, and, uh, local governments the option to do this. Try it out, see how it works. Uh, but it's been successfully implemented in a lot of other places. And I think has contributed, uh, to, um, maybe taping down some of the partisanship in, uh, encouraging a lot more engagement and voter participation.
That'll make a law forbidding partisanship as city level elections to begin with, but that's just my unfiltered opinion.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, uh, any other comments, questions? Come on, everybody, say, great job, Dee, Brian! All right. Well, seeing then, uh, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
That was Lionel. Do I have a second?
Second.
That was Graham. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.